I'd like to call the March 18th, 2013 meeting of the Pitt County Board of Education to order. At this time, Mrs. Jill Cammets will lead us in the elective allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Forbes, you lead us in moment of silence, please.
Yes, we would just remember all our employees and our students and the keeping the safety of our students in mind and also all the problems and situations that individual parents and students have to deal with on a day-by-day basis that we probably never know about nor their teachers. Let's remember all of them.
Thank you. Thank you so much. At this time, I will make adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I believe that we in the new business swap A and B so that the Policy Committee could go first, if that's acceptable to everyone.
Absolutely. We'll take that to a vote. Mr. Kenny called me earlier today and he has an obligation this evening and out of concern that the meeting may run into that, he'd like to present ahead of me. I do not have a problem with that. Could we have a motion? It's been moved by Mr. Kenny. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Council. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. As opposed, the same sign? Motion carries. Public expression, do we have any?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Ms. McGalhorn. Next is item C under four is Spotlight on Teaching and Learning, Chicago Robotics. Mr. Seth Brown, Mrs. Dixon, and Students. Welcome.
Hello.
This is one of the men of the country. It's good of you.
Our team is gonna set up a quick note for you. This is something that I got one day to control with this robot walking around and it's quite a challenge and so it probably not right now, but one day when you guys are walking around Chicago or coming to Chicago, you need to come out and run this thing and see what a challenge it is. Miss Suzanne Dixon is our AIG teacher at Chicago and our students, our team, we have fourteen members that participated in the Vex Robotics Competition. There were five middle schools that participated and two high school teams. Our team of six, seven, eight graders went undefeated that whole day. They won the middle school competition in Robin and then Miss Dixon's pretty spooky. She let her team challenge the high school team and beat them too.
Oh, wow.
They're pretty good. This was a program that was funded by the AIG program. ECU hopefully will, ECU hopefully will fund or will host a region that I think will be really interesting. I'm gonna turn it over. I think it's gonna talk a little bit more. Come on.
So, we went to, to the NUP and they gave us a kit that made all the middle schools the same kit and we were all about it. And then that day, we got to play with them a little bit and all the cars were in there. And then after they got done with all of that, we did some special package where we could customize it how we wanted to and so that's what we did to ours. And Miss Dixon went straight after school and she was getting it and playing around with it.
That's great.
That was heavy points.
That was fifteen.
That was the fifteen, so that's the big one, right? So, the small one is down with your points.
Different point values. It's fifteen because that was like the bonus one, eight, six, two, and one. I think the highest is going one round, thirty-eight points. And Josh, you wanna talk about how the competition ran?
Good. So, in our competition, we had two schools, one would be the red team, one would be the blue team, and you had two minutes to try to grab the ball off the wall, the stand, and try to throw it in a, in a pile of total points. And whoever had that, it was the winner. And there was a special green ball and the green ball was worth one hundred points. And then every team, I think there were seven times, that you might step in there at least. And you could beat it in the final round and it was how many points you got within the number of points.
All right.
So, it took three points to the entire town and the team with the no points at the end got the trophy. It was a high school and a little team.
It's awesome.
You guys had to program that whole around control, right? So, it can't do nothing.
Was it built like that? Yeah, y'all had to put all that in?
Yeah, it was a box full of things and books and metal and my world was this. I stood back and said, here it is, building. They did, they did one hundred percent of the work. I was very proud of it.
There you go.
So, how did you practice for this? I mean, what did you, what did you all do to prepare to be able to do this?
We got one answer. It was a metal box where the balls were in and one of the dads had built one of them for us so we could practice for that.
We spent a lot of time working on the design of the robot and I was actually in a parent meeting and wasn't with them for a while and they came up with a public design, which sounded right in theory, but our parents just kept saying, try it, try it. So, when you hit the bucket, the ball just got all over the place. So, we recognized that wasn't a good, a good design.
Did they have to stay stacked up like that, that, like this far or it didn't matter? Okay.
And we ran like a six, six pit, so it was a little bit different.
The design of how the balls are stacked, back it, whatever you, that's part of your strategy.
The way the balls are stacked is the way the competition was. The only thing that's our strategy is the actual robot.
Okay.
We didn't, some didn't have a form. Everybody got a form, but some chose to take the form off. But we thought this was precise.
Let me ask you.
Yes.
In other words, that could've been designed several ways.
Yes, you had the same amount of motors and the same basic, you know, you could only have four wheels. But you, we had all extensions you could build. Some actually went backwards and then they realized it was not heavy enough and it was flipped over. So, we spent some time just driving and practicing and driving and practicing and they won't admit it right now, but all of them can drive the robot except for me.
It took me a whole ten minutes, but I could do it.
I like that.
I'm struggling more than.
I've got eleven in the head out.
Congratulations.
That is awesome.
I hope this play the project.
I'm looking at her, she is in tears.
I know you have the brains behind all of this. What does it feel like?
Well, there's three other girls that are working here tonight.
I will say that Maggie was our best girl driver. She really won. She was the leader of girls and she was going to drive in the competition and this is the thing I'm most proud of about my team. They got together that day and when they saw the competition was kind of fierce, they said, we really want our best drivers to drive. I will give up my turn of driving to win. And Maggie, I'm gonna pick a hold of it, but to me, when she's first, when it first started in statistics and I don't wanna show my, please don't make me drive, so she was our biggest cheerleader.
I think, I mean, this really stresses the importance of our AIG program here in Pitt County. This is just outstanding. Just so you all know, we have something like this very similar on Planet Mars right now, which is being driven just by something like that at NASA. And so, this is very amazing and you, I've had the same thing going on right here in the Pitt County AIG program. Good job.
Mr. Brown and Ms. Dixon, one, could you introduce each one of your students and then as the students are introduced, if their parents are here, if you could stand so we can recognize you guys for being here and the important part that you played.
Okay, this is Kendall Daniels.
All right.
Grant Darling. Josh Rogers.
Proud of you, Kendall. Proud of you, bro.
Colton Harris. Cameron Moy. Maggie Williams.
Good job, man.
And Stephen Cappman. And we have a few members that are either on the softball field, soccer field, baseball field, et cetera, et cetera. We had fourteen teams, uh, members. Now, they told us to choose twelve. I started with seventeen, three just could not do it because of sports conflicts and then I couldn't, I just couldn't cut anybody. They're such a team and he let me, Mr. Decresy was kind enough to let me have twelve, I mean fourteen. So, they're, they're all valuable members.
I don't know about the rest of this board, but I suspect this is gonna be the highlight of our meeting.
I also want folks to realize, one of the components in our Ways to the Top District grant that we wrote that we didn't get, but it is written out there for us to continue to look for funding, was middle school robotics and Career and Technical Education already has a robotics curriculum written, but as you might see, it's heavily resourced. In other words, we need kids to have the stuff to be able to design and do this, but we know that middle school kids, the place to start this kind of program in Career and Technical Education would be at the middle school. So, we wrote that, not necessarily thinking we did it, but so it's packaged that we can continue to look for funders out there to try to do this because we think this would be a great elective at middle school for all kids, not just a part of the AIG program.
I've got one question. Maybe a hard question. And you can let whoever you want to to answer.
This is my world. This is my, this is our.
How many conflicts did you have between all of you before you really came up with that? Conflicts mean, you know, just so you want to do it one way, the other one, do it another way.
You're the man to answer this one. Maybe Kendall to address it?
I'd just say a lot.
They really got stuck on the whole bucket idea because they wanted a little bang for the buck. They wanted to pick up twelve at the time, but I did have a parent volunteer that couldn't be here tonight that helped me and he said, you know, let's try that strategy. And that was so, they learned so much from that. They saw that it didn't work. I think, I still am not sure going into the competition that they thought it was as good as it was. But I kept saying, we're gonna be very precise. It's just like a surgeon's hand. You're gonna be able to pick up that racket ball without hurting any effort.
Good.
Yes, we did have conflict and that was our theme in AIG last year and so we knew how to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was awesome.
Under our next item, under routine business, I would like to take a moment to recognize continuing kind of the spotlight on education trend, Mr. Brock Letchworth, who will be Pitt County Schools newest Public Information Officer. Mr. Letchworth, if you would stand and just introduce yourself to the board and give a look at the new face of Pitt County School.
Hey, everybody. As you said, I'm Brock Letchworth. I'm from this area, went to school in Pitt County, have kids in Pitt County schools. I have a lot invested in Pitt County schools and I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure that we always look that in the most favorable light.
Thank you.
And along that same, along that same vein, I'd like to say certainly Heather has gone on to, I'm sure Bigman done the things, but in the interim, Marshall McGalhorn did an outstanding job of filling the Public Information Officer role and I think she deserves a round of applause for that.
I appreciate you asking me. Have the confidence. I've enjoyed it.
You've done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Under our next item, item five, consent items, is there a motion?
Sorry?
It's been moved by Mr. Forbes and seconded by Mrs. Cammets. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. As opposed, the same sign? Motion carries. Under new business, the first item, replacing the educational program services is of course the Policy Committee report. Mr. Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could all turn to page twenty-three. Briefly, there are three schools that have requested a fifth color for their school uniforms. I think Hope Middle School would like to add yellow, EBA Cocke would like to add Kelly Green, CMX would like to add gray. They've all done a presentation before the Policy Committee meeting, therefore it comes before the board for approval by policy. Mr. Chair, I believe that we approve Hope Middle to add yellow, EBA Cocke to add Kelly Green, and CMX to add gray to their school colors.
It's been moved by Mr. Kenny and seconded by Mrs. Williams. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, have a motion, I'm sorry, a vote of approval. Are those in favor? Aye. As opposed, the same sign? Motion carries. Mr. Kenny?
Thank you. That'll bring us to page twenty-four. This is pop, this is for first reading, policy three point six zero zero, this deals with fiscal management, policy purchasing, and contracts. This is a very lengthy policy. This goes from page twenty-four all the way through forty-four. The only change to this policy is on page twenty-four, is the third paragraph that has been added right there about the superintendent from the board, chairperson of non-instructional contracts entered into by the superintendent and submit accordingly a report to the board that lets all non-instructional contracts entered into by the superintendent. That is the only change to this policy here for first reading tonight. Thank you. That will bring us to, we need no motion?
No.
Ah, first reading, thank you.
If there were any questions, though.
Any questions?
And that will bring us into page forty-five, policy seven point zero one nine, which deals with anti-discrimination, harassment, and bullying. This is the student policy. One policy will deal with students and one will deal with employees, as you will see. The crux of the change in the policy is the separation of bullying and harassment in all the language that is used throughout the policy. So, you will see changes therefore on page forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-nine. Page fifty has all been stricken through fifty, through fifty-one because it's been addressed in other areas of the policy. And fifty-three, there is an addition there. And that is it on policy seven point zero one nine for first reading. If there are any questions on that.
I'm sure you explained this at policy meeting. Just, this is a student policy and so it deals with students harassing staff.
It's seven point zero one nine, that's correct.
Actually, Ms. Jackson points out that your seven series is your personnel series, so this is actually the employee policy, but names got switched around.
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Can I come up and explain, please? Yeah.
Mr. Sonnenberg and I and Dr. Nolan have been working on these policies together. So, a lot of the language is the same, but what we've noticed is that there, the student policy should be under section ten and the employee should be under section seven. So, there may be some possible changes because there wasn't a lot of interchange based on our human resources meeting and we gave Mr. Sonnenberg some information back, so it may be that some of them had been switched off in the title. So, we would have to go back and reread with Dr. Nolan and myself to make sure it's in its proper place.
Sounds good. So, your logic, one zero one nine is dealing with employee, therefore not the student.
Right. This is employee.
Yes.
This time it looks like it's just a title switch, but I want to ensure and Dr. Nolan wants to ensure that everything's in its proper place.
Okay. Sounds good.
And so, we can take care of that.
Okay.
So, so you're comfortable that first reading's okay and that when we bring this back for second reading, a thorough review will have gone on so the corrections are made for the board?
Because we both gave that information to Mr. Sonnenberg and I'm not sure in the transcribing of it, if the two were switched.
Right, so we're not comfortable just changing employee and student in that? Gotcha.
I just wanna make sure that it's correct before we pass it on back to the second reading.
I got a question. Mr. Forbes? The only thing I would ask, if there are a lot of changes, if it would go back to policy?
Most definitely.
So that we could look at it closely again and then bring it back up, but if it's just the title, basically?
Well, I too, well, my chair is here. She's okay with that. I'm fine with that and so I guess EPS would have to make that decision too.
I'd be fine.
All right, so we will notify, I will notify Ms. Williams and I guess you can be notified as well, so we'll let you know so it goes back to policy.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Del.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Kenny?
Mr. Chair, with that in mind, I would withdraw at this point for first reading. Policies seven point zero one nine and ten point two, so that we can be sure for first reading that it is pristine. I thought we had a pristine coming here tonight. There may be some confusion. If we could withdraw those two?
Okay.
Would that satisfy everybody?
Yes.
And then let's, therefore that makes this a little bit easier.
Mr. Sue, would we need to have a motion to withdraw those since they've been put on for first reading?
No, since it's, if it's on the agenda and there's no action taken, that's not.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
It's a good move. Bring us to policy ten point two zero nine, school uniform and appearance policy, starting on page sixty-four. This comes from the recommendations of the Uniform Task Force. And what has been changed, if you look on page sixty-six, and this is for first reading. At the top part, under part A, number six, it's the part about wearing camisoles under collared shirts has been added. Part B, number two, has been changed so that no denim of any color is allowed. Then on page sixty-seven, under section C, number six, it again addresses T-shirts and camisoles under collared shirts, which are your appropriate school colored shirt. On page sixty-eight, section E, outerwear, under number one, denim vests or jackets are no longer acceptable. Number two has been added, which says lightweight, lightweight fleece jackets, which are school-approved colors and do not have hood are allowed. And under number three, sweaters and sweatshirts, which are school-approved colors, with the exception of school-approved logos, may not have insignias, logos, labels, words, or pictures, has been added. Going to page sixty-nine, under section F, number seven, leggings and footed tights may be worn only as an accessory under skirts, shorts, dresses, shorts, pants, or capris that meet uniform requirements. Number eight has been added, no jeggings allowed. Under section G, number four, there's a little bit of verbiage there added. This has to deal with Jeans Day. Principals may make exceptions to the uniform policy for special events such as Jeans Day. However, Jeans Day is limited to once a month and no more than nine times a year. Also, Jeans Day must be a reward for positive behavior, fundraiser, or fundraising for a cause that benefits all the students at the school. And those were the changes that were made for first reading here tonight, Ms. Williams.
Ms. Waters?
All right, referring back to page sixty-six, at the top of page number six, we have, we, I'm afraid we've misplaced a propositional phrase. Students may wear, we're allowing them to wear, undergarments are not to be visible, but they can wear a shirt or a camisole. And I think we designated that it was the shirt or the camisole as an undergarment had to be one of the school-approved colors. And the way it reads, it's the collared shirts that are one of the school-approved colors and then we go the nurse house back up to any colored camisole, but the under the collared shirts is misplaced.
My understanding from our discussion is that was the intention that the collared shirt had to be the, the school color.
That was mine as well.
I thought the, I thought the undergarment was supposed to be the same color.
Hopefully, we wouldn't be at the scene anymore.
Well, camisoles are very much a.
They're a T-shirt, you can see under a collared shirt. So, color isn't the issue?
Mr. Chair, I learned a little bit, little bit about camisoles during this process and my limited understanding of the camisole, don't kill me, Ms. Milde, is similar to a male wearing a T-shirt under a collared shirt where maybe your first button or two is unbuttoned and you can see the, the T-shirt underneath the camisole serves the same purpose. There may be a little of it that you would, or could conceivably see. Now, I may be highly wrong on that and if so, I accept that because.
I did think, I did think the discussion was that those, I did think the discussion was that the camisole could be a different color from the collared shirt, but that it had to be one of the approved colors for the school. So, I might be wearing a navy blue collared shirt and a.
White.
Conny gold camisole or, but that I couldn't wear a navy blue and pink, that I couldn't wear a camisole that was a solid color, not approved as a school color. And I think that's what you're asking us to clarify.
It's redundant, although there's a lot of redundancy in the policy to be emphatic. It's redundant to say the shirt has to be in the designated color because we've said that ten times already. I think this was addressing the camisole being in the same color, in which case that under a collared shirt is in the wrong place.
Ms. Williams had her hand up.
If Jill's still in line with them, my question is different.
Yeah, it is a follow-up to that. Might I suggest that when we come back for second reading, we take under-collared shirts and put it at the end of the section so that it would read, students may wear T-shirts or camisoles which are plain white, black, navy, or one of the additional designated school colors, under-collared shirts. Does that take care of it?
Yes.
So, if we can.
Makes for a much better reading.
Rewrite it that way.
Okay, yeah. Ms. Williams?
Yes, my question was number three on page sixty-eight. It says sweaters and sweatshirt.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, I think that's a sixty-eight. Sweaters and sweatshirts, which are the school-approved color, colors, with the exception of school-approved logos, may not have insignias, logos, labels, words, or pictures. Sweaters or sweatshirts with school-approved logos may not have hoods. Problem comes in here, what are the school-approved for logos? Is that logos on the, on the garment itself?
A school logo, just a school logo.
Or, okay, but is that read that way?
My question on that would be.
Is that the polo, is that the?
School.
An apostle?
DHC or JH Rose or North Pitt. And that like a panther for the.
Yeah.
Or. It's got, it's spirit wear. It's, it's approved.
Just for the school?
Yes.
Okay.
And a lot of them sell them within the schools and they're approved to be sold that way. Yes.
Okay, just to make that clear, it's not a manufacturer's logo.
Right. Schools don't have the power to approve.
I know that, but I'm just saying, but on the next one, it said may not have insignias or logos, they can be twisted with the school-approved logos. Some principals may, some principals may not. With the little, well, if it's not the size of a quarter, if it's not the size of a fifty-cent piece. That's what I was getting at, the manufacturing part.
I think we can, if this isn't clear, we can make it more clear or we can just be sure when we go through this, once the board has approved it, because there are changes and we have to do some training, that people understand that this means the same thing it always has. It's not giving anybody more authority than they already have. Same, I wish that was always there.
You just need to make sure it's in there.
All right, Mr. Kenny?
Then, Mr. Chair, though, bringing us to, for second reading, rules of procedure one point two. This was one we had for first reading, the policy committee was asked to, you know, review it again, put out there to anyone, any feedback they may have, please send it in. We didn't receive any feedback, and so we, as a policy committee, sent it back to the board for second reading here tonight. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve rules of procedure one point two zero.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kenny and seconded by Mrs. Owens. Is there any further discussion on one point two zero zero? There being none, let's have a vote, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed at the same time? Motion carries.
That's the second.
That was second reading. Thank you, Mr. Kenny. And now we will go back to Educational Programs and Services Committee report, Ms. Homestead. Good evening. Good evening.
I want to say good evening to all boardmen, board chairs, Emery. Educational Programs and Services Board Committee met on March the seventh. Board members, the committee members that were present was Mark Whitaker and Christine Waters, we had a guest, Barbara Owens was there. There was not a form, so no actions were taken, but we did have some discussions, there were two agenda items that were discussed. The school technology initiative was discussed, and also the beginning revisions of AIG plan. I'll just briefly sort this through what we talked about, and then invite you to the finance committee, because some of us have done those in finance committee. In eleventh year, we went through a visioning activity with the district about technology infused instruction. And the main thing that came out of that, administrators and staff went through that visioning activity, and the main two things that came out of that visioning activity was that we wanted to affect this instruction in learning, and we wanted to be ready for online testing. And those, those components are important, because you don't want to just buy items and devices to set on a shelf and wait for testing. You want to buy items that you can use every day, and then also for testing. So the technology task force started setting together a plan to address those two purposes. And so the school technology plan basically has three components. One is infrastructure, and how do we make sure that the schools are ready for wireless? How do we make sure the band was big enough? How do we make sure accessibility is there? How do we make sure everybody's ready when they need to be ready? The second was how do we have enough devices for testing? How do we make sure all the kids can do this? We set a goal of being able to do, all students being able to be tested in a one week window. Now, that's lofty, but in reality, we'll probably have three to six weeks of a window, but still our goal is to shoot house, and so we're shooting for a one week window. And then the next component of that plan, we wanted to address the effective teaching and learning. How do we create and train teachers to effectively use technology in their lessons? And so that plan addresses those three things. Jeff Smith was there, and he talked about infrastructure, and wireless points, and bikes and things like that, lots of stuff. And Tim was there, he talked about effective instruction, how do you train teachers, how do you roll out technology, how do you keep them up to speed with the change in so much? Michael Cowan was there, he talked about budget. Dr. Emery was there to talk about the overall vision. And so it was a really good discussion. Basically, the group decided and agreed to, because we knew Jill had already heard a lot about the plan on the task force, and so everyone agreed to go ahead and send it to finance and let it be talked about some more, look at the financial situation, does the budget match what we wanted to do this time? And so it will be going to the finance committee. The second item on the agenda was the AIG plan. And we have, it's time to revise, and so for the first time, Tim was actually quite excited, because for the first time, the standards are the same, the template is the same, the practices are the same, and so all we've really got to look at is how do we identify and how do we serve? As you know, the state of North Carolina has created a subgroup now that's academically gifted, it's going to be a subgroup that's watched to make sure that they can grow. And so how does that affect how our plan is going to be rolled out? So he presented the beginnings of a revision. It is not the final plan yet, it's still in revision, it's still being worked on, but he wanted to go ahead and involve the board members, so he could help get direction on where we wanted him to go. So he presented the beginnings of that. The team that's working on the plan is looking at multiple criteria for identification still, aptitude, achievement, and grades. We're using the COGAP for assessing, their grades have already taken that this year. The plan's going to address flexible grouping, so the schools can meet the needs based on individual needs at the school. And so he's planning to present this to the school board, where you'll be able to see more detail, but this was just his attempt to get direction, make sure we're on the right path, before he goes too much further. So that was our discussion. Any questions? And lots of people are here to help me if you have.
Mr. Forbes? I do appreciate that the AIG plan will be presented to the full board, and that'll be very important.
Explain the subgroup, I didn't quite get that.
Remember when we had subgroups, where we looked at, we have white students, Hispanic students, black students, free and reduced lunch, these are groups of students. And the State Department said if you had forty or more in a group, that they tracked how you were growing those students, what the achievement gaps were. You know, are they making progress, are each of the groups making progress? Well, this year, we're going to have, they've actually created a subgroup of AIG students. Are we meeting their needs? And so, starting next year, they'll be looking to see, are we growing those? And it's coming from the question of, you know, you may be growing your bottom sector, are you still growing your top sector? Yes, they're performing high, they're not going to be seen in proficiency, but are you growing them? And so the state has rolled out that to be a subgroup, so that we can track and see if we're meeting their needs. So that's where it's coming from.
So we can track them and we are held accountable?
Yes, very much, so they're a part of our accountability, yes.
Ms. Williams?
Sure, you said forty students.
Well, now it's down to thirty.
Thirty students, is that thirty students per school or service?
Yes.
Okay. And we have that kind, in our AIG program?
Some schools.
Some schools.
Not all schools, and that's just like any other schools, we have, some schools that have some groups, and some schools that.
And I know one time we had discussed AIG versus STEM, what does that look like?
Well, you just saw STEM.
Well, I know.
And, and that's what we're doing, we're looking at, yeah, we're looking at different things in the schools that deal with engineering, science.
And mathematics.
Yes.
Okay.
And that was a merger of the two, AIG and STEM. We're looking at STEM, not just an AIG.
Okay.
And what's, one other question, what's the difference in that, in the old academic gifted and, is that, it's the same thing as a name?
Oh, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, that was.
Yeah, academically, intellectually gifted, yeah.
And the current program.
And when are, when are we going to get to the point that we can put more kids in that? Because my, my kids were in that, but I didn't really see that other kids couldn't be in it, that were mid-level to even some lower level students, because, you know, it was a lot of hands-on and creativity, and all our kids are creative in various ways, and so, when are we going to get to that point?
We're, we're working on the criteria of eligibility, that's part of what's being revised now.
If I, if I could say, Mr. Decrecy, along with Ms. Homestead, had done a tremendous job at our last EPS committee meeting of fleshing out, to me, one of the strongest programs I've ever seen as far as identifying and not being a subjective system. He did a very nice job, very nice job of putting together those qualifiers for students to be in the AIG program.
Will the whole board receive that information?
Yes, when he comes to do the program, the actual plan itself will be presented to the full board, and that was one of the most impressive pieces that I've ever seen. I don't know of another school system that's using a program like that. I think Pitt County Schools is going to be put on the, on the cutting edge as far as utilizing that program. Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Homestead. Dr. Emery?
Thank you, folks. It is the time of year that we approve open enrollment schools. Our policy says we will do that prior to April first each year, which is a period at which parents can start making applications for open enrollment. If you will look on page seventy-nine, you will see we have the three small high schools, there's been no change in that, that's been part of our policy for many years. We have also, for the last few years, had Bethel and Aiden Middle School. The addition this year is Northwest Elementary. They are more than two hundred students under their capacity, and we use that as a key factor in looking at a school of someone who are to choose to go there, making it an open enrollment school. So we recommend those schools for your approval as open enrollment schools for twenty thirteen, fourteen school year.
So, Mr. Chair. It's been moved up by Mr. Peaton, and it's been seconded by Mr. Kenny. Is there any discussion?
I want to ask about the Northwest decrease. Is that something that has happened yearly, or were they under when it opened?
No, they were not under when it opened. Some of that's reassignment based, and at some point down the road, we may want to look at an overcrowded belfour versus an under.
That's why I wanted to.
Capacity, but until we get to that point, this is a mechanism for allowing people who have the, who want to and have the ability to.
And transportation will be provided for these students?
Not for open enrollment, no. No, we have never provided transportation for open enrollment. The other issue, Mr. Forbes, I'm glad you asked it, is that during No Child Left Behind, where parents had the ability to opt out with transportation, those people can stay and finish at the exit grade, but they're having to provide their own transportation. And I think that also had an impact on Northwest, and as they continue to make big gains and achievement, we'd like to give them the opportunity to attract some kids back into that school.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Before we vote, one of the things I had noticed today, as I had come home in the brief period before we were able to come to the board meeting, I noticed in the article in the paper today that was written about this, there was a comment that was made, that all of Pitt County Schools should be open enrollment schools, and I'd just like to remind the public that we have to have a system in place to be able to manage sizes of buildings and resources. One of the most significant things that I think was glaring to the community was the size of AIG Cox some years ago that it had gotten to, and that begins to get to a safety issue and being able to adequately have resources in place and an environment that is conducive to a good, strong, quality education. And so, do know that we're not just arbitrarily assigning schools to be open enrollment schools, there's a rationale behind it, that we want to be able to have buildings that are manageable in size and in resources as well. So with that being said, is, we've had a motion, and we've had a second. All in favor of that? Aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, and continuing on, let me congratulate Chakad's program, Ms. Dixon, what an outstanding way to start our meeting, and thank you, Mr. Forrest, for recommending them to come in as a spotlight. In the room also is the brainchild behind that, and I would be with this if I didn't ask Mr. Decrecy to quit hiding behind the monitor back there. He was the one who started it, encouraged the schools, and made sure they had the resources to participate in that program. So we thank you, Tim, for encouraging that in our middle school programs. Welcome, Brock, we look forward to having you, we know you're going to do a great job, and I'm sorry that you're still in the classroom, but I'm sure your students and parents are not. One of the things the board remarked on when we made your recommendation to them in closed session was that we don't steal from the schools to promote the central office, so we're glad you're here tonight. Brock is going to work with Heather on Friday to learn how to do the website, so he will take over the after-hours job she's been doing with, with the website, so we'll, we'll turn over these duties as, as much as we can here until we can bring you in full time. And Mr. Pollard assures me he's not dragging his feet on a replacement for you, so. I also want to congratulate Cornelia Cox, who was named last week as the NCAE Assistant Principal of the Year. It's quite an honor for us to have that person in our district. Cornelia has been working at Creekside as an assistant principal, and is top notch, and just very proud of, of that recognition. Also want to recognize, I, I sent this to the board members who had emails, and Ms. McLaurin was going to work on, is it up as a podcast on our website, the South Central's video that they took to the NC Ties Conference about technology in the classroom?
It is on the website, yes. It's not in a podcast, but it's in a.
They can access it, but this is really excellent. They presented at a state conference last week, and they just did a really awesome job of showing through the video how students are using technology in the classroom. And I just want to congratulate them. Those things, when you watch eight or nine minutes of it, it looks really simple, but it takes a lot of time to put it together, and it was a, a student production. And finally, I want to say congratulations to Joy Carter, our newest named teacher of the year. Very proud of her, from Elmhurst Elementary. It was truly a surprise for her, because this makes two years back to back that a music teacher has been the teacher of the year. She was among a slate of finalists who were all math folks, and I don't think she thought there was any way that we would pick a music teacher two years in a row as our teacher of the year, but we congratulate her. I want to congratulate Delilah and her staff, they every year continue to outdo themselves with an absolutely wonderful recognition program, and ultimately, we need to say, we are blessed to live in a community, because without folks like the Farm Bureau, we would not be able to put on the kind of really nice recognition that our teachers get, and be able to do that in such a special way. And then a side note to Pacellas Automotive, because we, we do know for sure we are the only school system in the state that gives their teacher, or are able through the business community, to give our teacher of the year a car to drive for the year. That happens at the state teacher of the year level, but is a rare thing at the district level. So we thank Brian Pacellas as well for making our folks feel special. I spent three hours with the Z. Smith Reynolds Community Group before coming here today, and I sat beside Beth Alfers, who was telling me that people sent her texts, because she would revolve around all year with teacher of the year on the side of her car saying, "Don't talk on your phone while you're in that car," or, "Don't, don't pass, don't go through any yellow lights," and those kinds of things. But we, we really do thank everybody who works so hard. While we recognize one teacher from each school and a teacher of the year from our district, I think these people take it very seriously, that they represent all of their colleagues back in the buildings and the hard work that they're doing. So a beautiful event, and Delilah, your staff did a wonderful job, without Vera Good this year, who has been the queen of that program for a very long time. She was on the phone, but we, we thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Emery. I would like to say thank you to the board tonight for an outstanding meeting. We had some great things tonight in terms of Chakad coming out and hearing from those students and seeing those parents, and that's, that's what this work is all about, in hearing from our communities and being involved. So thank you for a great meeting, and again, congratulations to Joy Carter, our teacher of the year, outstanding job there. Mr. Forbes?
Yes, I would just say that tonight just shows how important technology, engineering, science, AIG, all of those programs fit together in helping all students, because I think the future really is engineering. If you look at how many students that the United States produce, produces in engineering, it's very low. We get most of our engineers from foreign countries. So I, I think that Pitt County's going in the right direction in developing these students and getting them prepared. I also would like to congratulate the teacher of the year, and I would like to ask her if she would come one night on Spotlight on teaching.
Teach us a song.
Well, you know, just come and just have a conversation, I think that would be great to recognize her. And also Chakad, and those students, and what they did, and Suzanne Dixon, and little Lone Ranger in there, Maggie, I know her real well, she probably. She probably did come up with some of those designs. Mary, I'm sure she, she enjoyed being in that class. But again, it takes strong teachers, it takes a strong community to get behind something like that and make it successful. So, congratulations to all of them. And again, congratulations to our teachers and all the hard work that they put in each day.
Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Mr. Pedden?
Yes, on the lines of talking about Teacher of the Year, I'd like for us to entertain the idea of maybe having it done at nighttime versus lunchtime, because this past week, bless your heart, blessed all the board members come out and show them that. And I'd like to, because someone's out of work, I'd like to maybe next year look at doing it at night instead of lunchtime.
I would, I would certainly like to entertain that. That would enable us all to be able to attend. Thank you for that, Mr. Pedden. Ms. Williams?
Short and sweet.
That is outstanding moniker for us all to remember. Short and sweet.
I was trying to find my invitation. We're pretty proud over at Northfield. Northfield has accomplished a lot over the past couple of years, and we're very proud of our staff and our students over there. And this year, they are doing their first induction to the Science Honor Society. And I know that this is going to be held on the twenty-seventh of this month, and that's just something I wanted to bring to notice, so if any of y'all have some time, you might want to call out there, you know, to participate, you know, to come show up and support our students. I'd say congratulations to our Teacher of the Year and to our Vice Principal at the state level, Ms. Cox and Ms. Carter. Carter. Other than that, I had an opportunity this weekend to go to a reception in honor of one of our retired educators and, and former social worker, I mean counselor, advisors in our school system, Ms. Ann Brown from down Simpson and Grand St. area. She's an amazing lady, and they had awarded a lady named Ms. Gloria Dixon the Citizenship Award in Ms. Brown's honor. And I'd just like to say thank you for allowing us to go and participate, and it was just a wonderful experience for me and my family. So, thank you. That's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Kennedy?
On Friday, for the fourth or fifth year, I was a judge at the Eastern Regional Math Fair at ECU that is managed by Lindley Martin, one of our Teacher of the Year candidates. And there was a little murmuring in the group before we got started about the fact that there were four math teachers and one music teacher nominated, and the music teacher won. Just a little bit of murmuring, but I understand from the grapevine that the lesson that was observed by Ms. Carter had a tremendous amount of math incorporated into the lesson. And so, that just reminds us all that one of the reasons we support the arts in Pitt County so strongly is that wonderful connection between academics and arts. That, I mean, Ms. Carter is a perfect example of that. Let's continue our support of STEM and math and, and the arts.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Little?
Welcome, Brock. To speak again. And you'll do a great job. You have tough shoes to follow with Heather's work and Marcia. I want to, you probably saw it in the paper, but one of our own teachers, Lauren Williams-Harvey, I don't know if she was chosen or volunteered, she represented the Ed TPA, which is, I think, a group that able to kind of highlight different methods of teaching and stuff like that. And she represented, Pitt County teaches at EBA-COAC, and it said, "Have we watched..." This was another person that was there, who was the Dean of College of Education. "So, listening to her articulate so clearly and cogently how she plans, instructs, and assists the students in her class, and how she uses the data to inform her planning, and subsequent days' instructions was awe-inspiring." She said, "Each day I reflect," this was Lauren speaking, "each day I reflected on my lessons and how well my students were performing," Harvey said. So, obviously, she was a great representation of our Pitt County Schools, and congratulations to her. She was a new teacher, actually, went through Rose High and ECU under the Teaching Fellow Program. So, congratulations to her. Actually, the average income, I just read this the other day, preparing for something at work, the average income for recent graduates from Civil Engineering, and I took notice to that, since my son is graduating in Civil Engineering in May, is fifty-two thousand dollars a year for a recent graduate. So, I can say that our son is well-prepared coming out of high school at Rose from all the math and science and all that he got. Did participate in a lot of the robotics classes and things like that, and it's a great career for us to keep nurturing through our system. So, congrats to the kids at Chakad, and I hope they stay interested in that field. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Waters?
Well, I'd like to also commend Joy Carter. The lesson we observed, she addressed all the learning styles and all the teaching styles and the technology. And I sang her a little song for four days. I was so happy when I came out of her class. She was very deserving. And I wasn't kidding when I said she needs to come show you, you know, just a synopsis of her lesson, because it was awesome. Not that math instruction wasn't, and I would call that too, but it was, it was simply outstanding. And I enjoyed, I thank the chairman for asking me to serve on that committee, and, and I enjoyed doing that very much.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Ms. Owens?
I'm going to pass.
Yeah, I get the newspaper too, and I look here at Delilah. Congratulations to everybody. And, and you know, Teacher of the Year, I don't hardly know where to start, but there's so much that's coming out of Pitt County Schools, and I think it should be, yeah, we're here, we, we see it, and I wish it was a way I could press a button where the whole world could just flash. And that's why I want to get to be part of the website, because, you know, I, I entered the website myself and considered myself as being a foreign, some, somebody somewhere else, just to see. And there are some things that I, I saw, and, and, now we've already talked about it, but that is a way for us to let the world know about Pitt County Schools. And it seems so much to me that it's done, just like I can hear tonight, with Chakad, and congratulations to those also. And I realize it's published in the paper, but, you know, website is where a whole lot of people see it. So, I'd like to get, to be a part of that website. So, if I bother you, just don't pay me much attention, just probably listen at least. But I think that is a way of getting the world to see the operation of the Pitt County Schools. And with that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Forbes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Moore says, far as all the good things that are going on in Pitt County Schools. I, I celebrate with the kids that were here tonight at Chakad and to show the, the interrelationship of the academia versus the STEM versus the career technical education and how all that merges together. And applied learning, project-based learning, I was working with new schools' project people, and they were talking about project-based learning and those kinds of things. We've been doing project-based learning for a long time, and, and Pitt County Schools has embraced that for a long time. And so, I'm just real pleased to see that, and it takes a great teacher to inspire that, too. And I'd just like to say how much I do appreciate Suzanne, what you have done down there, and all of the parents that were involved with this. That's what makes a school system special, and that is the community involvement, the involvement of parents, and it's just great to see that happen, to see. Brock, I want to thank you for being a part of Pitt County Schools. I, I can imagine you could have been sharing your talents with a lot of other places, and you chose to, to be with us, and we do appreciate that as we move forward. You put a great, great face on Pitt County Schools, and I know that you will. Mary, I, I want you to know that as far as Ms. Annie Brown is concerned, I give Ms. Annie Brown a lot of credit as to where I am today, because she is the reason I chose to go to North Carolina State University and take agricultural education and become an FFA advisor. She, she, she took over when my daddy passed away in nineteen seventy-two and helped to guide and, and mold me in a direction. There's, the Annie Browns of the world are in Pitt County Schools, and they're making a lot of difference for a lot of young people's lives, and I want us to realize that. And so, I, I just want to embrace that tonight, and, and, and let's recognize that, too. There's another group that maybe is not getting the attention that it so well deserves, but they, they finished high in competition at BH Conley, and even though it's not sponsored directly by the school, indirectly, they do a tremendous job, and that's the hunter's safety team that they have out there. They're doing a tremendous job, and I can see that we can kind of relate that with the agricultural program that is developing out there, too, to get some more interest in that, along with North Pitt and Aiden Griffin as well. That would be a great thing, I think, for us to do. And then, last but not least, congratulations to Joy Carter, Teacher of the Year. It is a, it is an honor. How many teachers do we have in Pitt County? I mean, over two thousand. And for her to receive that honor and to be the ambassador for Pitt County Schools, she'll do a tremendous job with that, and thank all the business and industry that puts together and helps to make that, and formulates and helps to make that happen. There is so much of the percentage of Pitt County that moves forward with Pitt County Schools, and I'm just honored to be a part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Ms. Council?
I too would like to congratulate the Teacher of the Year, Ms. Carter, and also the NCAE Teacher, Assistant Principal, Ms. Cornelia Cox, who I know very well, and she's a very deserving young lady. And in fact, her father was the one that interviewed for a position on the board, so I thought y'all need to know that. So, quite a talented young lady. And I also would like to say that I do thank the people that came out to the Senator Brown, Brown's meeting on last Thursday night to give your input about the school board size and everything. I thought that was really good that there were a diverse group of people out, so that was good. Also, I'd just like to let people know that I am again soliciting Rising High School seniors for the Farm Bureau IFA scholarships, not scholarships, but the program for one week to attend North Carolina A&amp;T State University. I've been working farm bureau over fifteen years as a volunteer, and last year, we had nineteen students recruited between three counties, Pitt, Martin, and Beaufort County, and one out-of-state kid. So, we do want to get more kids exposed to agriculture, and it's a wonderful program. And this is Ann Brown. We salute her, being a former guidance counselor at Pitt County Schools. And I'd just like to challenge all those other guidance councils out there to, if you don't know or haven't heard of Ms. Ann Brown, you need to get to know her, because she was truly an epitome of what guidance councils should be about, exposing our children. And now, she loved A&amp;T, but she also exposed children to all other schools as well. And this is what I wish our guidance council would do a better job at, to make sure that those kids coming through all our high schools know about all our colleges and universities, and take them on field trips, give them time off to go and visit these schools, and when those recruiters come in, sort of hand, push them to go and explore these schools, because a lot of times, children don't have that exposure from home. And if our educators do that, you know, say, "Go and look at those recruiters, get those materials and read them, take them home," like I used to tell my boys, "and put them in a shoebox, and we're going to read it and explore to see what these various schools has to offer, and take a field trip whenever possible." So, that's what I would like to challenge our guidance councils to do a greater job at. And our social workers, we have a lot of issues in our schools, and we would love for, to look at social work more in our school system. And all of our kids that's having problems, turn them over to a social worker. Social workers are great, in the right, uh...
Absolutely.
...to, to help solve problems. And Shaw and I can attest to that, because we're, we're great social workers.
Thank you.
And we know how to work some problems and help others, empower them to solve some of their problems with, within our school system. And last but not least, I'd like to say that Shaw University had a very successful United Negro College Fund effort last Friday, and this is about giving scholarships for young people to attend college. And it's not just Shaw University, UNC of sponsors, colleges, thirty-nine universities nationwide, and also they focus on the private historic black college. But students from other colleges get this money as well. So, it's open to any student that is attending colleges. So, we just want you all to know that we had a very successful event. We met our goal, and I will be presenting the money at the gala this weekend at Shaw University in Raleigh, to represent my county.
Thank you, Ms. Council. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had all-county course going on in the past couple of weeks, and if you ever wanted to see some of Ms. Carter's work, who's our Teacher of the Year, that was a good place to see it. The all-county course was a huge success. I've been able to attend several, again, several sporting events over the past couple of weeks, and I continue to be highly impressed with the sportsmanship that's being shown both on and off the field, on field by our students, and it stands by parents of Pitt County Schools and other school systems that come in. That's just been great to see. I want to reiterate Mr. Forbes' comments about the hunter's safety group at Conley that I've recently learned a lot about. It was recently a Saturday at the Pitt County Wildlife Club out there. I had a little girl out there doing some shooting over the weekend, and was, first question, "What school do you go to? What school do you go to?" These are very good things to be involved with. I want to compliment the Teacher of the Year. First, the runner-up, Pat Cersey. I've talked about him before in front of this board. He comes from a family of educators here in Pitt County, does a great job out at Faulkland. It's, that's not a bad thing to be runner-up, that for Teacher of the Year. And then, Ms. Joy Carter, who I cannot say enough good things about. I don't know if anybody else in the room has this experience, but she currently teaches my child, and her teaching has a direct impact in, in our home on several subjects. My child is excited to go to school early. Yours as well? No. Okay, no. She goes early for course, and believe me, we don't want to have her late to course. We would hear about it from our child. We would never hear about it from Ms. Carter, but that comes from Ms. Carter, that enthusiasm. And if you've ever been to one of her Christmas concerts or spring concerts, it is amazing. She puts a diverse program together that is, that is always just inspiring and exhilarating. And then, lastly, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy Easter as the Easter season approaches. I'm very proud to be part of Pitt County Schools, and I'm particularly proud to say that we have voted calendar the past couple of years that offers Good Friday off, and I think as we go into the Easter season, that's important to note, and I hope everyone has a safe and blessed Easter holiday this year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your remarks, Mr. Kennedy. That concludes the Pitt County Board of Education meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kennedy has so moved and been seconded by Mr. Forbes. All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed to same side? Thank you so much.